23 Regular Meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown. I serve as Chairman of the Board, as well as the Commissioner of Riverbend Township. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television and live streaming audience, I would like to present the Gaston County Commission, beginning on my far right.
Alan Fraley, Charville Township.
I'm Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
I'm Kathy Cloninger, and I'm Dallas Township.
Kim Johnson, Gastonia Township.
Good evening. Bob Hovis, Craters Mountain Township.
At this time, I will ask Ms. Pearl Burris Floyd to give the invocation, and then Commissioner Hovis will give the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please stand.
Oh, what a wonderful day it is that we can gather together in unity. Won't you pray with me? Our wise and gracious heavenly Father, we come at this time just to express our thanks for your love and kindness. Father, we thank you for allowing us to live in a community where we can still love one another. We thank you for your grace and your goodness. We ask that you would be in the midst of this meeting tonight, that the elected officials who will take charge will do the things that are good, do the things that are right, and do the things that will be meaningful for our community. Father, we ask that you would bless each person who is in attendance tonight. Let us be slow to anger and quick to forgive. Father, we thank you for allowing us to live in a country where we can still pray and seek your face. Father, we thank you for all the things that you continue to do for us. We pray for those who are in authority over us at the state level and at the federal level. We ask that you would continue to be with our soldiers wherever they're stationed, and we pray that we will continue to be able to lift up your holy and righteous name. For it is in your son's name we pray, and God's children said. Amen.
If you please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is Proclamations, Commendations, and Awarded Certificates. Commissioner Johnson will take a proclamation to proclaim April 22, 2023, Marshall Shuler Kabinus Senior Day in Gaston County. Ms. Pearl Burris Floyd, along with Tanze Barrow Wallace, the cousin to Marshall, and also if Mr. Frank Barrow was here. Commissioner Johnson.
So whereas Gaston County is proud to commemorate the life and legacy of Lieutenant Marshall Shuler Kabinus Senior, a Tuskegee, say that right, Airman for his bravery and service to our country, and whereas Mr. Kabinus is remembered as one of our local leaders, mentor, native son, and real-life hero, and whereas Mr. Kabinus was a graduate of Highland High School in Gastonia and Morehouse College in Atlanta, Georgia, and was considered a pillar of pride in Gaston County and surrounding communities, and whereas Mr. Kabinus married the granddaughter of Booker T. Washington, notably known as the founder of Tuskegee Institute, now known as Tuskegee University, and whereas Mr. Kabinus was the first black person in Gaston County area to earn a pilot's license in the 1930s, and a member of the Tuskegee Airmen, who were the nation's first black military pilots in the final years of World War II, and whereas the Tuskegee, I just cannot say that word, Airmen, played a substantial role in the desegregation of the U.S. Armed Forces by proving no shortage of intelligence, skill, courage, or patriotism for such an endeavor among African-Americans, and whereas Mr. Kabinus was one of the hundreds of blacks who flocked to volunteer for the 99th Pursuit Squadron when the first all-black squadron was formed in 1941. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaims April 22, 2023, as Marshall Shuler Kabinus Senior Day, in recognition of Mr. Kabinus' many contributions to our country and for the respect and honor he brought to Gaston County. The Board further urges all citizens in Gaston County to remember and honor the valor of Tuskegee Airmen adopted this 25th day of April, 2023.
This is a grand opportunity after 80 years, is recognition for such a distinguished man and a native son of Gaston County. Now, I have to say, I'm from Shelby. He did have his origins in Cleveland County, on a little farm north on 226 called the Kabinus Farm, 72 acres. He was raised up there, and I'm part of the diaspora of the Kabinus family. I would like to say, as a representative of the Kabinus family that extends from here in North Carolina, to California, to Kansas, to Pennsylvania, Washington, D.C., New York, and Georgia, we are extremely, extremely honored and grateful to the Gaston County Board of Commissioners in giving this special tribute to our family member, Tuskegee Airmen Lieutenant Marshall Shuler Kabinus. The Kabinus family and I, as a fellow veteran, I'm an Air Force veteran, and you, as a community, are standing here under a legacy, folks. We're standing under the shadows of perseverance, a person who had perseverance in the time he grew up in, bravery and uncommon valor, and overcoming the odds. So, in your acknowledgement and recognition, this day of your native son, you are remembering the generation of men who have, of men, and have put a stake in the sand with that proclamation to continue to uphold and set the standard for ourselves and an example for our children, to give no excuses, and not to be a victim even in these times, and to empower us all by passing down the story. So Gaston County, you have a legacy to pass down, and you know, this day, mark this day on your calendar, to pass this down to your children. So again, as a family, I'm deeply honored, I really am, to be able to represent and my family in remembering the Tuskegee Airmen Lieutenant Marshall Shuler Kabinus in such a beautiful and honorable way. Thank you so much, and God bless you.
This has been a privilege and an honor to be a part of this. Tanze and I have been friends for almost 20 years. Did not know all this about her famous family, and to have an opportunity to make this come true. Would also like to thank Mrs. Dot Guthrie and the African-American Museum of History and Culture for making, taking a stand and making sure that one of our finest soldiers had a day. Another little thing about Mr. Kabinus, he was a member of St. Paul Baptist Church, and I know Lucy is familiar with that church. It's one of the oldest black churches in Gaston County, and that's where he became a very ardent community leader. He was a trustee there. He, he did things that people didn't expect, like he would pay for people's funerals when they didn't have the money. He would go out and visit people in the community that were less than, or had less than what his family had, and so it made him a folk hero, and his family kept all of this to themselves until this year. And so, we're just so proud to have the opportunity to share this rich history with all of Gaston County and to anyone who's watching this, this broadcast. We are planning also to have a savvy conversation with Ms. Tanze Wallace, and our PIO, Adam Gob, is going to take the lead on that, so we'll have something in our files that will live on, and when you want to look up something about this famous Kabinus family, and I'd say famous because he was ahead of his time, and he was, but he was a humble man, and he comes from a humble family. People have asked, well, why did it take 80 years? The family held on. They talked about these things at their family reunions, and we didn't know that because we weren't in the family. And so, it has just been a pleasure to find out about a real Gaston County hero, and now, his legacy will live on throughout the United States and other places because of what he did right here in Gaston County and what he did as a Tuskegee Airmen. So Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, we humbly thank you for this opportunity. And we...
The next item on the agenda is Citizens Recognition. Our next item is Citizens Recognition. A portion of the Board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens for an opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. Comment period is not intended to require the Commission or staff to answer any question and provide a response. Questions requiring a response shall be answered as soon as possible through the County Manager's office. Citizens' recognition tonight would be limited to two minutes. As I call your name, please step to the podium, state your name and address. The first citizen to sign up, Mr. Marshall Roush.
Take your time, sir.
I don't hear well, I assume this is a time to talk about the museum. Thank you. I look at this situation where the Dallas Museum is having a problem, the county commissioners, of course, look into it and try to determine what the proper steps are. Please let me give you a similar situation right here in Gastonia. About 1950, a gentleman named Bud Schiele, who was a scoutmaster, took all the things he had worked on, made, and his wife was interested in it also, and he started a collection. He was a wonderful scoutmaster. He had a lot of scouts who believed in him, and they suggested that they start a museum. A museum was started with just about nothing. Several of his previous scouts were now mature, and they helped him. About 1950, my dates are not exact, about 1950, they came to the Gastonia City Council and asked for the city council to take them over to have a museum, and from nothing, you see what the Schiele Museum is now. You have that challenge. The beginnings of a fine history art museum is before you. You can end it, or build it, like they built the Schiele. I was there when we changed the name, I was a city councilman, we changed the name from Gastonia Museum to the Schiele Museum, honoring Bud. I was there because I made the motion for the first $50,000 contribution from the state of North Carolina to the Schiele. The Schiele is there. It can make it disappear? No, no. Too many people have put too much work and hard time in it, and my suggestion to you is instead of deciding whether to let it run or not let it run, make the decision to make another landmark like the Schiele Museum is for Gaston County. And that's not easy, but you can do it. Thank you.
I'm gonna take a chairman's privilege, now I will speak. Marshall, thank you for coming.
Family member, Tuskegee Airmen Lieutenant Marshall Shuler Kabinus. Uh, the Kabinus family and I as a fellow veteran, I'm an Air Force veteran. And you, as a community, are standing here under a legacy, folks. We're standing under the shadows of perseverance. A person who had perseverance in the time he grew up in. Bravery and uncommon valor and overcoming the odds. So, in your acknowledgement and recognition, uh, this day of your native son, you are remembering the generation of men who have, uh, of men and have put a stake in the sand with that proclamation to continue to uphold and set the standard for ourselves and an example for our children. To give no excuses and not to be a victim even in these times. And to empower us all by passing down the story. So Gaston County, you have a legacy to pass down and you know, this day. Mark this day on your calendar to pass this down to your children. So again, as a family, I'm deeply honored, I really am, to be able to represent and, uh, my family in remembering the Tuskegee Airmen Lieutenant Marshall Shuler Kabinus in such a beautiful and honorable way. Thank you so much and God bless you.
This has been a privilege and an honor to be a part of this. Tanze and I have been friends for almost 20 years. Did not know all this about her famous family. And to have a, an opportunity to make this come true. Would also like to thank, uh, Mrs. Dot Guthrie and the African American Museum of History and Culture for making, taking a stand and making sure that one of our finest soldiers had a day. Another little thing about Mr. Kabinus, he was a member of St. Paul Baptist Church and I know Lucy is familiar with that church. It's one of the oldest black churches in Gaston County. And that's where he became a very ardent community leader. Uh, he was a trustee there. He, he did things that people didn't expect, like he would pay for people's funerals when they didn't have the money. He would go out and visit people in the community that were less than or had less than what his family had. And so it made him a folk hero. And his family kept all of this to themselves until this year. And so we're just so proud to have the opportunity to share this rich history with all of Gaston County and to anyone who's watching, uh, this, this broadcast. Uh, we are planning also to have a savvy conversation with Ms. Tanze Wallace. Uh, and, uh, our PIO, Adam Gob, is going to take the lead on that. So we will have something in our files that will live on. And when you want to look up something about this famous Kabinus family, and I'd say famous because, uh, he was ahead of his time and he was, and, but he was a humble man. And he comes from a humble family. People have asked, well, why did it take 80 years? The family held on. They talked about these things at their family reunions. And we didn't know that because we weren't in the family. And so it has just been a pleasure to find out about a real Gaston County hero. And now his legacy will live on throughout the United States and other places because of what he did right here in Gaston County and what he did as a Tuskegee Airmen. So Chairman and Commissioners, County Manager, we humbly thank you for this opportunity. And we-
The next item on the agenda is citizens' recognition. Our next, uh, item is citizens' recognition. A portion of the board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens for an opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. Comment period is not intended to require the commission or staff to answer any question and provide a response. Questions requiring a response shall be answered as soon as possible through the county manager's office. Citizens' recognition tonight will be limited to two minutes. As I call your name, please step to the podium, state your name and address. The first citizen to sign up, Mr. Marshall Roush.
I'm sorry. Take your time, sir.
I don't hear well, I assume this is a time to talk about the museum.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The county commissioners, of course, look into it and try to determine what the proper steps are. Please let me give you a similar situation right here in Gastonia. About 1950, a gentleman named Bud Sheel, who was a scout master, took all the things he had worked on, made, and his wife was interested in it also, and he started a collection. He was a wonderful scout master. He had a lot of scouts who believed in him. And they suggested that they start a museum. A museum was started with just about nothing. Several of his previous scouts were now mature and they helped him. About, uh, 1950, my dates are not exact. About 1950, they came to the Gastonia City Council and asked for the city council to take them over to have a museum. And from nothing, you see what the Sheel Museum is now. You have that challenge. The beginnings of a fine history art museum is before you. You can end it. Or build it like they built the Sheel. I was there when we changed the name. I was a city councilman. We changed the name from Gastonia Museum to the Sheel Museum honoring Bud. I was there because I made the motion for the first $50,000 contribution from the state of North Carolina to the Sheel. The Sheel is there. It can make it disappear? No, no. Too many people have put too much work and hard time in it. And my suggestion to you is instead of deciding whether to let it run or not let it run, make the decision to make another landmark like the Sheel Museum is for Gaston County. And that's not easy, but you can do it. Thank you.
I'm gonna take a chairman's privilege now. We'll speak. Uh, Marshall, thank you for coming and speaking. Josh, thank you. Um, I want to let everyone in attendance and Marshall, Josh, if you could just reiterate what we're getting ready to say to him. We presented the budget at the work session that we had and this was under discussion. It was a discussion to find out what was going on. Each commissioner on this panel has gone to the manager in individual sessions and the museum is in the budget, fully funded. So I want everybody to know that and I want Marshall to know that as well. Obviously, there's a caveat. We still have to vote on May the night, so that'd be the second step to this. But I wanted everyone to know that prior to where, um, before anybody who doesn't want to speak or you're nervous to speak. I think Marshall said eloquently what's going on. The man was there when it was founded. I think that says what we need to do. But the next speaker, uh, is Ms. Kim Norwood.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners and Dr. Eagle. I'm Kimberly Norwood and my address is 1327 Harden Road. I want to take just a few minutes to recognize the founding members of the museum. There's a plaque that hangs outside the museum on the building. The Gaston County Art and History Museum was formed in 1975 as a cultural project of the Gaston County Bicentennial Commission and incorporated as an educational institution. The museum is devoted to the promotion of creative arts and heritage awareness in Gaston County and the state of North Carolina. The museum opened to the public on July 4th, 1976 with the generous support of the Town Dallas Board of Aldermen, Gaston County Board of Commissioners, the North Carolina Bicentennial Commission, Jeannie G. Roush, the Ralph S. Robinson Foundation. Our founding trustees were Jeannie Roush, President, Franklin Creach, Vice President, Lucy Penniger, Secretary, and Harold Sumner, Treasurer. Our board members were Dr. Simeon Adams, Helen Babington, Gail Bale, Dorothy Caldwell, Mary Jo Cloninger, Margaret Davenport, John Fraley, Harley B. Gaston Jr., Shirley Good, Betty Hacker, Evelyn Hand, Kristy L. Jenkins Jr., J. Harold Leinberger, W.K. Mooney Jr., Colonel Catherine J. Royster, R. Alan Stout, C. Dalton Stowe, and Sister Mary Theophane Field. We will celebrate our 50th anniversary in 2026 with your assistance. And I ask that you give our board and the museum staff the opportunity to continue to move forward in bringing our past and our present together to help us form our future projects. We would like to work hand in hand with the commission and hope that, um, you guys see fit. Of course, you've said that we would be funded and you just have to vote, but we appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Ms. Norwood, thank you for the ongoing dialogue that you've had between your board and Dr. Eagle. The next person to speak is Alan Cloniger. Person after that would be Pat Rudisell.
My name is Alan Cloniger. I live at 601 McSwain Street in Dallas, North Carolina. The museum. My mom's name's on it. It meant a lot to her. But we as people of this county can't let that museum die. It holds the history, not of just Dallas, but of the whole county. If there's nowhere for future generations to go to, to see what has occurred in this county, what pains we have gone through, what successes we have had and what failures we have had, then as has been said many times, once you forget the past, you're prone to repeat the past. That museum stands as a symbol of the hardworking people that populated this county. It's one of the few places probably left in the world where you have actual mill machinery still in there. And whether we want to admit it or not, we wouldn't be much of a county without that mill machinery and the men and women that came from the mountains down here to run Cause they helped make this county. So, and I'm not just sitting here, cause I got a little emotional. I went by the museum today and looked at that plaque. It's got my mom's name on it. That, that's still a little soft spot. It's got Jeannie Roush's name on it and she was the leading force to make that go. But it had an awful lot of other people's names on it that had been very important to the people of this county. So rather than just say you're going to fund it this year, I'd ask that you, and it's, you can't commit future boards, but you, and I've served on the board at that museum since 1990 off and on, even while I was sheriff. But you need to ask future boards to not take a swipe at low hanging fruit, but be committed to fu- fully fund that museum so that our great, great grandchildren will have a place to go to learn about Gaston County. Thank you for listening to me.
Ms. Pat Rudisell, and then the next person will be Ms. Lucy Penniger.
All right. Good evening and my name is Pat Rudisell. My address is 1232 Queensgate Street in Gastonia and thank you so very much. Um, there has been so much activity, flurry of activity in recent weeks, um, among all the museum supporters and we're all so grateful for what you're telling us tonight and we hope that in the next few weeks as you vote that you will continue to uphold that commitment. So thank you. Um, my request to you tonight though is to consider the role that the museum plays in the bigger picture of the culture of our community. Imagine what a sad and soulless place Gaston County would be without the Art and History Museum, the Sheel Museum, Crowder's Mountain, the Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden, Belmont Abbey College, Gaston College, the Carolina Thread Trail, our local Greenways, the Little Theater, Martha Rivers and Poston Park, the Lorrie Mill, Fuse, the list goes on and on of places that make Gaston County a desirable place to live. All of these add to the vibrancy and livability of our community. And when we're competing with the amenities across the river in Charlotte, you and I both know that we need every one of these institutions to remain vital and viable if we're to grow and thrive. The museum was started almost 50 years ago by the community and for the community and every one of the more than 83,000 artifacts that are in the collection, uh, that was entr- that were entrusted to the museum by a member of our community to be preserved and interpreted for the benefit of Gaston County residents and everyone who visits. I have one quick personal story about the museum that illustrates this point. Several years ago, I found, uh, the POW bracelet that I wore in the seventies. It bore the name of a serviceman, William Stubbs, who was missing in the Vietnam War. Many of us wore them back during high school and college then. I thought the museum might be interested in having it. They were. And Alex Brooks, a member of the museum staff, helped me research this 20-year-old soldier's name. I learned the tragic story of his death in the war and was able to correspond with one of his fellow soldiers who was in battle with him. That exchange was one of the most meaningful of my life and the museum made it possible. That's one story and there are 83,000 more just like it. I've been involved with the museum for a very long time and so I'm proud of our staff and their dedication to the institution and Gaston County's art and history. I'm confident that working together, the museum staff, the county staff and you, the commissioners, will arrive at an equitable and fair solution that will allow the Art and History Museum to continue to serve many generations to come. And again, thank you for the decision you've made and thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Lucy Penniger. Follow that would be Andy Osborne, but why were the Chairwoman Norwood, had any motion to accept?
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. All in favor? Is unanimous? Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Penniger.
I'm sorry I missed that vote. Um, a lot of what's been said, I was gonna say, but I just want to tell you that it's kind of neat to be a senior citizen now and, and I'm so glad Marshall's here so that I'm not the oldest one. But there are some things that are really special to me, some real, some stories about that museum. When we moved the little train depot over to be our and for our learning center, uh, Jeannie was there and unfortunately, the train came along as we were driving that thing along the railroad track. Jeannie jumped out in front of the train and, and waved her hands and stopped it so that the, the depot could go by. Marshall, maybe you remember that, but that was an exciting time for us. We, we have several buildings there too that we're, you know, we've got the little caboose that went with the train depot and we've got the Daniel Stowe Carriage House. We've got the largest collection of carriages in North Carolina on display. So we've got some really neat things there and now that we've got the Mary Ellen Nelson Center for our, uh, to keep all of our records and things there and our, our artifacts in a, a climate controlled better place, we're, we're, we're positioned to really grow. And, and Dallas is beginning to, to take on some exciting things too with the, the new aquatic center that's coming. So there's going to be a lot of growth on the Dallas Square and maybe some more foot traffic than we've had. But we've had some, over the COVID epidemic, we've done a lot of wonderful things online and it's surprising to me to see numbers like 166,000 people that have visited online. So we're doing some really things, some things right and it's exciting. I, I want to challenge each of you to come over and take a tour, uh, and a behind the scenes tour and see exactly what's going on there. It's really heartwarming to be, to be a part of this. It's a wonderful thing for our county and I have loved every minute of it. Thank you.
Next person is Andy Osborne. If that would be Mr. Scott Warren.
Thank you for this opportunity. Andy Osborne, 2231 Water Oak Lane. Um, I'm just gonna talk about how quickly the, today becomes history. We moved down here from New York in 1956. I was only two. My parents are both and my grandparents are all from New York and we came down and opened a sweater mill in Cherryville. It was actually supposed to be in Dallas, but the building we had rented when we got down here, they had rented out from under us and the only building we could find was in Cherryville. So we spent 46 years in Cherryville. I'm gonna read some names. Threads, Farr, Parkdale, American and Eford, Carlton Yarns, Burlington, Macbeth, Arlington Mills, Lorre Grove Mills, Gurney Mills, Central Yarn and Dyed, Stowe Mills, Beltechs, Roush Industries, and I can go on. We were two things when we came down. Either your family was in textiles or they worked for Carolina Freight or Acres Motor Lines. One or the other. You were either in, you know, the trucking business or you worked for a mill. You know, you know, whether you owned the mill or you swept the floors of the mill. Somebody that comes down today, it has changed so much. There's no Carolina Freight, there's no Acres Motor Lines. Um, 90% of the companies I just read are gone. Nobody would know that we were once the spindle city capital of the world. And that's just happened in, you know, a short 50-year period, which is nothing when you come down to, um, history. And how easily it's forgotten. And we have a wonderful, wonderful textile exhibit at the museum. And from what I understand, before COVID and things, we had lots of classes from all the school systems that came and went through the textile museum. We can't let this go because there's another place around here to teach that. And I just appreciate all your thoughts and, you know, to fund it and let's see if we can't get communication going both ways and, and all of us do better. Thank you very much.
The next will be, um, Scott Warren. Then after that will be Dwayne Jordan.
My name is Scott Warren, 5233 Buckingham Drive in Charlotte. Uh, good evening Gaston County Commissioners, County Manager Dr. Kim Eagle, Gaston County Staff and Citizens. Um, I come to you as representative of the North Carolina Museums Council, the statewide professional museum association that serves museums across all 100 counties here in North Carolina. I'm here to advocate for two things. One, for Gaston County to continue to fully fund the museum in the county FY 2324 budget, which it appears that it's heading in that direction. And two, for the county and the museum to continue discussions on how the museum can grow and flourish with Gaston County as its partner. The museum is the keeper of the county's identity and a vital hub for the arts and any effort to defund the museum would only harm its citizens. Current funding for the museum equals around $900,000. That is just one quarter of 1% of the total county budget. Yet the museum's economic impact, along with the other tourism attractions in Gaston County, nets close to $300 million. Pair that with the museum's cost per visitor at a dollar and six and the county gains a great return on its investment. The pandemic presented attendance challenges for all museums across the state. Through innovative programming and creative outreach coming out of COVID, the museum had a 317% increase in visitation, a 217% increase in social media engagement, and a 26% increase in virtual engagement. Resilience like this is no accident. These numbers directly reflect the staff's commitment to offer high-quality, award-winning programming and it offers the county a long-term investment in its culture. Gaston County and Museum's Board of Trustees have a unique opportunity to work together by coming to the table and discussing a path forward. The board has already committed $40,000 towards the new collection storage while the county provided in-kind renovations to facilitate the move. This is a shining example of partnering together to provide collection storage to preserve the history of Gaston County. I hope then the coming weeks, the county and the museum can sit down, have meaningful conversations and work together to continue to fulfill one of Gaston County's strategic focus areas, recreational, cultural and lifelong learning opportunities. The museum is a great place to facilitate the strategic focus and enrich the lives of Gaston County residents. Thank you for your time and thank you for your continued commitment to Gaston County Museum.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dwayne Jordan. The next speaker after that would be Laurel Morris.
Good evening, Dwayne Jordan, 213 Brentwood Circle. Uh, I'd like to make this very brief and thank the board for its consideration of rezoning. Uh, we look forward to making our home at 4545 Crowder Crest Drive. And, uh, I'm not aware or have not been made aware of any opposition to this rezoning whatsoever. Thank you.
Ms. Laurel, was he wanting to come in during the zoning period?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's a problem. We'll come back to that. Ms. Laurel Morris. Next after that would be Mr. Logan Smith.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Laurel Morris. Um, I'm resident of 2348 Villa Oaks Court in Gastonia. And many of you know that, um, I was a, the director of the library and a county employee for over 33 years, but I'm coming to you as a citizen today since I've retired. And I also want to let you know that I have lived in this county for almost 39 years. And one thing that I remember, it's funny that you've been talking about the mills. When I first came here and I started working at the library, I learned a little bit about the history of the Lorrie Mill and the Lorrie Mill strike and nobody was talking about it. It was like a taboo subject. There was a lot of books and a lot of interest from people outside of Gaston County. People would come to the library and do research, but we never talked about it in Gaston County. And slowly, slowly, things have started to change. We started having a few forums. We did, there was a Mill Symphony that was written and performed at the library. There were some forums. But the strike exhibit- But the strike exhibit that this museum put on a couple of years ago was outstanding. And this is what a museum is for. This is what the staff, who is so dedicated and so professional, they finally had a way to tell that story before it was too late, before the people that were part of it and their family members were part of it, before they were gone. And a chance for them to have their children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren to really know that something really historic wasn't always pretty, but it was historic and it's part of our heritage. That's what the museum is for. And educating the children and educating the adults and helping us to celebrate our culture and our heritage, that's what the museum is for. So I'm just giving you a plea for you to continue to make it a priority, along with, of course, the library and the parks, to, because they work together to enhance the quality of life.
Thank you. Ms. Logan Smith. Next will be Ms. Diane Marifield.
All right, I'll try to talk quickly. I am Logan Freeman Smith, a Gaston County native, former Gaston County educator, and relevant here tonight. I interned at the museum in 2018 while I was a master's candidate at UNC Charlotte. There are interns at the museum, range from high school students to PhD candidates. My life plan was to be a museum educator, while that did not pan out. Alex and Ally poured into me at my time at the museum. Because of them, I learned that I had a passion for adult learners and ultimately earned a degree from LSU and have the job that I do now, working at my local community college. I not only learned by working with all ages, I learned about things I was never taught nor did I ever teach in Gaston County, like the Lorrie Mill, which proves to me how necessary it is for the museum to remain open. This should speak volumes on the necessity of local history being taught in an engaging setting like the museum. I wanted to work at the museum for my internship because at the age of 23, I learned of a strike I had never heard of before. The museum is a cultural center for people to not only visit but to also learn from. If our schools don't cover local history and you take away an opportunity to learn about it as a museum, who's gonna teach it? The museum's knowledge base in being for all ages is something that many of you would know about should you take up the opportunity that was presented to you earlier to visit and learn at the museum. My last point tonight is something I wrote about while interning at the museum. During one of the all-age programs, Hikes Through History, there was a photograph presented. Someone asked Jason Luker why everyone in the photograph was white, so we discussed the concept of nativism, the idea that jobs in America were meant for white Americans. Everyone in the crowd was shocked, but this was normal in the 1920s. So 100 years ago, this was normalized. 100 years from now, how would the commissioners here tonight look if we closed down a museum over a photograph? A photograph of two people in love, which I think this is what this all comes down to, the whole idea of defunding the museum to begin with. And so from that, would you look like those who engaged in nativism 100 years ago? Would you look like those who were in the history books that I was teaching my students out of, you know, a decade ago when I was in teaching of, who blocked the doors for desegregation in the deep south just decades ago? Sorry, which side of history are you gonna be on? By defunding the museum, from where I stand, that would look like taking away culture and history over a picture, leaving you looking scared, uninformed, and unwilling to learn or be open to people unlike you. And truly, you could be the ones who would benefit from somewhere like the Gaston County Museum, and to take away the history of the county and the opportunity to learn would be a disgrace. It would be the persecution of a group unlike you, people like the couple photographed who were in love. And it doesn't seem like loving others like Jesus would do, like the GOP stands on. And so with that, I'll leave you. Good night, and God bless.
Thank you. Since we have the other things going on, just, the next person will be Diane Marifield. And then after that will be Dwayne Burks. While Ms. Marifield is approaching, I want to let you know that the study that was done about the museum was done, and I think the museum can tell you that that was done before any picture, anything that surfaced. So that would be an incorrect statement. Just want to let that be for the record. Ms. Marifield?
Hi, I'm Diana Marifield. I live at 1519 Buckingham Avenue in Gastonia. I'm a recent transplant from the north, but one of the things I do whenever I travel, no matter where I go, is find the museums. And I have to say, my first trip to Gastonia was for a wedding that was held at the museum during the exhibition where you guys did the bootleg exhibit, which was just totally awesome. Okay, so my thing is, I think when the federal government was trying to find ways to save money, they said the same thing about PBS, and the numbers were the same, one quarter of 1%. That's 1% of 100% of our budget that we use to fund the county's city projects, et cetera. As we fight over what we can read in school, what we can teach in school, what we can say in school, long before the current argument, we got stuck on testing and testing and testing our students. So in exchange for the testing, we took out all our cultural stuff. There was no more music classes, less art classes. What do we have left but our public museums? And so I'm just here to say, I have been up to that museum for every exhibit since I have been down here. I love small-town museums because they're the ones that tell you the culture of the neighborhood that you're in, the community that you're in. And I just found out that, you know, you can talk to all your friends and neighbors that you make down here, but really, the museums are the ones that researched this. And I have to say, it is a gem, and I am so glad that you've decided to fund it. Let's hope we don't have to go through this like every, every year, because we should keep our thumbprint on our culture from the, I love the, I live right behind the library in this year. I'm there all the time. I love it. So I think we should seriously consider making this a priority, even though it is one quarter of 1%. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Simons will be the next speaker. After that will be Clark Simon will be the next.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank the county commissioners for allowing us to speak tonight, but two minutes is a little bit raw compared to what we've witnessed tonight. And this is important. I'm glad y'all brought up about the textile people because this county budget that they're about to put on us, that they're talking about, what?
Speak to me, please.
I'm sorry. This county budget that you're about to put on us. I'm gonna state my name first, Larry Simons, Lowell, North Carolina, 1603 Power Drive. I'm not used to all this. But anyway, it's terrible that we're have to gather together, but no one understands the budget more than I do, because I've been studying this budget for the past 12 months, Mr. Warren and Mr. Chairman. What we have is a failure to communicate to the people. Allowing people to speak two minutes is horrendous. What we have here tonight, Ms. Eagle, as county manager, makes $240,000 a year plus benefits. And all these folks in Gaston County, that's like, I think the percentage is like 470% above the average salary in Gaston County. How come you can't reduce some of your expenditures and keep applying more and more to people? But before I forget, Ms. Linda Starnes has been in the tax department for 50 years. No one has awarded her anything in this county commission bill, as I know of. But that is a precious lady to work 50 years in this tax department and never be recognized. It's terrible. But we need to recognize our people. We need to go to interim budget before you pass this budget and go past your time to where you get your, when you get the audit for this year in October. And you can do that, Chairman. You can do something good for the people of Gaston County and give us a true value. If this budget, if assessed value is $400 billion, can you imagine, if you cut it to 60 cents, do you know how much that is? How much that equates to how much you're gonna be taking in? You don't do that good of a job. Start with, it's terrible. If you look at all these departments, department, 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 and you keep adding on people, 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 that means your budget's gonna go out the killer, just like our little city of Lowell. We've taken on like 20 employees since COVID. You have too, probably 50 employees. You've got 52 people in the tax department. But this is part of it. But you got time to do what's right. Go to an interim budget and show the people of Gaston County how much you really appreciate them, and thank you. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Mr. Clark Simon. After that, Ms. Karen Bringle.
Thank you. My name is Clark Simon. I live at 311 West 10th Avenue, Gastonia, 28052. A little bit about myself. My husband and I moved here in 2018 from Santa Monica, California, and bought a fixture upper in Yorkchester in the Historic District. I am a nonprofit consultant, helping clients achieve their philanthropic goals. And my main mission in life has always been serving the community in which I live. That's my passion. Since moving here, I've served on the Historic District Commission for the City of Gastonia and currently am on the Stormwater Commission. I also have previously served as the president of the Board of Charlotte Pride, which is the largest festival and parade in the southeastern United States. Last year brought in 275,000 people into Uptown over the course of two days in August. I want to express my appreciation for the fact that you found it appropriate to continue funding the museum after the past 10 months of headlines surrounding one specific image that got folks talking. I bring this up as that photo of two men embracing after a marriage proposal happened to be taken at Charlotte Pride Parade and Festival. And the photographer was actually paid for by Charlotte Pride to document the course of the weekend. Coincidentally, this story came out in June, which is also Pride Month, but it didn't seem like a coincidence, in fact, it seemed very deliberate and calculated, to do it during one specific month when the exhibit had been up longer than just that month. It's a shame that I felt compelled to come tonight and speak because the various news stories and comments from elected officials regarding defunding the museum just don't seem to stop. You can say it's due to a lack of visitors or being more efficient and deliberate with funding, but at the end of the day, we all know that this months-long discussion came to a head over a photo of two people expressing their love for each other. The county should be more concerned about addressing real issues such as infrastructure, access to quality health care, creating jobs, keeping taxes low, the homeless crisis, removing Confederate monuments. The county should not use a museum, a place one goes to learn about pivotal moments in history to better understand our humanity, as a political ploy to garner attention and so divide amongst our residents. I'm heartened to know that you've done the right thing for now, but this matter deserved to have a separate and proper public forum, forum, excuse me. You all took an oath to represent all members of this county, but it does seem, based on past public comments, you only care to represent those that vote, love, and worship like you do. Finally, if the county motto is "Local strength, global success," how will that be achieved when apparently bigotry and homophobia outweigh common sense to offer a welcoming and affirming community where all can continue to contribute to the vibrancy and growth of this county? Thank you.
Next will be Ms. Karen Bringle. After that will be Ms. Lauren Parker.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Karen Bringle. I live at 109 North Belvedere Avenue in Gastonia. On February 18th this year, I attended a Black history program at the First Congregational United Church of Christ on this side of Kings Mountain. It's in Gaston County. Learning the history of the building in which this church is located was, was in itself notable. The primary speaker at the event was Dorothy Count Scoggins, the woman who, as a 15-year-old, was the first to integrate Harding High School in Charlotte in 1957. Meeting, meeting her and hearing what she has to say to us 46 years later, after she made history in such a courageous way, was an exceptional experience for me. Another speaker was an elderly Black man, Lemuel Froenberger, who was in the class of 53 at Lincoln Academy, another institution in Gaston County that made history. Also present at the program were three staff members of the Gaston County Museum. And they were there with a young woman named Lisa R. Withers, who was introduced as a young woman PhD candidate who would be joining the museum and Historic Preservation Commission, thanks to a grant initiative from the National Endowment for the Humanities. This grant aims to further explore African-American history in Gaston County. The end goal is to designate up to four sites, Lincoln Academy, First Baptist Church of Dallas, the Biggers Family Home, and two Black hospitals, and incorporate the oral history and research into the interpretation of the Gaston County Museum. Lisa Withers is a historian who values partnering, partnering with community members to preserve, examine, and share information about the past. She has experienced and engaging diverse audiences about North Carolina's 19th and 20th century. She was one of the presenters at the program. And, and her, she was one of the most dynamic and enthusiastic young people I've seen in a long time. She just, her enthusiasm was infectious. You could tell that she was so glad to be on board with the museum and looked so much forward to her projects. And, and I said to myself at that time, wow, I'm sure glad I'm here. I get to meet her, see her, and, and I sure, she's such a great resource for Gaston County. So I was disappointed to hear that y'all were thinking of, of removing your support for the museum, and I thought about her and her work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bringle.
Okay.
Next person, Ms. Lauren Parker. And after that will be Mr. Brett Messer.
Hello and good evening. My name is Lauren Parker, 4604 Oakleaf Lane, Gastonia. I am the current executive director of the Little Theater of Gastonia that's just down the road. So as you can imagine, I'm a huge proponent of the arts, especially the arts of Gaston County and by Gaston County residents. I could talk in broad strokes about the things the museum can do for the county as a whole, but I would like to briefly speak on what it's done for me as an artist, historian, teacher, and resident, both professionally and personally. Professionally, when I used to work at a school before COVID-19, it was the only resource that I had that offered affordable field trips and art and history programming. They would actually come to our school because at the time, our school couldn't afford buses to go anywhere else. And they taught our students about local art and historian, or historical events that happened here in Gaston County. At the theater, they have provided historical costumes and historical props to make sure that the shows that we do represent correctly what we're trying to portray to the county. They've also come and helped with our programming in our summer camps. For instance, we did Moana Junior last summer, and we had people from the museum come and talk about Maori art and history, which was something that we were able to do that other places may not be able to do. Personally, I've been able to go to the museum every year since my children were born. We have done their festivals, we've done their programming, we've seen their exhibits. They have sensory available programming for my alternate-needs child that has allowed him to be able to experience arts and history that he might not be able to experience at other museums, even in bigger cities. I interned in college at the museum. I helped with collections and all the archives that I did there was of Gaston County residents. And all the hard art that I helped hang up in their gallery was art from Gaston County residents and schoolchildren. I was able to put my grandmother's picture on the affrenda that was there during their Day of the Dead, the anniversary, or right before the year she died, the year she died, right before the anniversary of her death, which was very important to me. So just as a personal and professional resident of Gaston County, I do say that the museum is a great gem, and it would be horrible to, to lose it. Thank you for your time tonight.
Mr. Brett Messer. Next will be Gary Sullivan.
Good evening. My name is Brett Messer. I live at 1220 Oakwood Avenue in Gastonia. And my grandfather came down from the mountains of Haywood County 100 years ago this year working the cotton mills when he was 13. And I'm a small business owner, and I see people, a small business that sees people moving here from all over the country. We are growing. We are a vibrant community. And you folks are not only stewards of our tax dollars, but you're stewards of our history, ultimately, because you control the purse strings. And part of that, being a good steward, is taking care of that history, helping to promote it, helping take care of all the artifacts that have been donated to the museum over the years. And that history that the museum holds is colorful, it's inspiring, proud, and sometimes it's not pleasant, and sometimes it's controversial. But that's history. The history of the people of this county should be cherished and preserved. And I'm so thankful that you've come to your senses, so to speak, to fund the museum, because that would be such a terrible thing. Think of the message that sends to people and businesses that are wanting to move to this county to either live or have their businesses. If they see the leadership of this community in this county not cherish their history, the history that these people are wanting to now become a part of. So think of that message, what that sends. As far as the percentage of people to the dollars spent that are being served, you know, I hope that my house never catches on fire. I may live my entire life and not need the fire department, but I'm glad they're there. Okay? The schools, my kids are no longer in school, but public schools are important. My tax dollars help fund that, even though I do not use them right now. So as I said, Gaston County is growing rapidly. The funds are there. That 1/4 of 1% is only going to get smaller. In a few years, it's going to be 1/5 of 1%. It may get down to 1/10 of 1% as we grow, as your budget grows. But as I said, it's a bad message, a bad idea to even consider defunding the museum. And really, do any of you have a garage large enough to put all the stuff that the museum's collected? But I appreciate your dedication to this county. I know you're trying to make good decisions. And I'm glad that you are going to fund this museum that I've been part of on the board and helped chair the board several years ago. I thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker will be Mr. Gary Sullivan. After that, Mr. Daniel Hutchinson. Is Daniel Hutchinson here? After that would be Mike Tambarella.
Good evening and thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Dr. Daniel Hutchinson. I reside at 5066 Miana Drive in Clover, South Carolina. But I've worked here in Gaston County and have resided here often on since 1998. Tonight, I want to affirm and thank the commission for its support for the museum in the coming year and share my own personal experiences of how the museum has enriched the lives of Gaston County residents and students from around the country. I am an Assistant Professor at Belmont Abbey College here in Belmont. My views do not reflect that of the college. I'm speaking as a private citizen. But at my time at Belmont Abbey, I've served over the last 10 years as Department Chair, as a professor, and have worked with the museum in helping to share programming about the local history of this community with our students. Over the last 10 years, it's been a tremendous pleasure to see Gaston County residents connect with their past and in doing so, talk to their families, their parents, their grandparents about the remarkable history of this community. It's also been remarkable to see students from around the country and beyond learn more about what's special about this community and perhaps bring that message to the wider world. It's part of your responsibility to carefully steward and invest in Gaston County's future. However, in thinking about that future, it's important to always have a solid foundation in the past. And the Gaston County Museum and its remarkable staff have done tremendous work, especially over the last few challenging years, in order to bring this remarkable community's past to life. I encourage continued support for the museum in the years ahead, and I thank you for your time this evening.
The last speaker will be Mr. Mike Tambarella.
Good evening. My name is Mike Tambarella. I live at 2816 Colony Woods Drive here in Gastonia. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the tax rates for the county. Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak with you again. I've been in contact with many of you since the last meeting, and I want to say thank you for listening to what I've had to say. The property reevaluation that the county has put forth has hit property owners especially hard. Most have seen a 50% or greater jump in their property values. This valuation, coupled with the high tax rate, will certainly impose a hardship on most property owners. That's why it's important to reduce the tax rate to revenue-neutral or lower. Gaston County certainly has grown in the past several years. Positioned as we are with the rapid growth of the Charlotte area has certainly affected Gaston County. However, the new property values were calculated by the Appraisal District during arguably the height of the property growth and boom. This was prior to the failing economy that we face now, together with runaway inflation, rising interest rates. And that's why the natural growth and the expansion of the residential and commercial and industrial developments are contributing to the county tax base. It is important that the tax rate be set lower than revenue-neutral. Based on a 50% increase in property values by the Appraisal Board, a revenue-neutral tax rate of $0.61 per $100, the county will realize an increase of over $24 million in revenue. That's why it's important to reduce the revenue received by the county to truly revenue-neutral, that is, to have as much money coming in as last year as the tax rate would need to be set at $0.54 per 100. Therefore, I'm asking you to reduce the tax rate to near $0.54 per 100, and I thank you for your consideration and your efforts.
Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda is presentations. Ms. Kathy Hart, Parks and Recreation, will be presenting with Mr. John Wood, Senior Project Manager from Alfred Bench &amp; Company. Ms. Hart.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. I'll be brief, and I'll give most of my time to John, who will give you our information. We have been working on our master plan update since July 2022. John works with Benesh. The county's done some work with Benesh before.
Ms. Hart, one second. Let's just wait just a second.
Okay. Sorry.
You can continue now.
Okay, thank you. We've been working with Benesh on this plan since July last year. John Wood is a professional landscape architect, and he's worked on many park plans in this area, including the most recent master plan for Gastonia. So I'm going to turn this over to him, and he'll give you our findings, and I'll be here for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager. Thank you, Kathy. She already gave my intro, so I don't need to do much there. But I do have a short presentation I'll run through that will cover our process and some of the plan recommendations for this update. We go into a lot of our planning, and we do a lot of system-wide plans, so looking at an overall county or municipality. And we come into it with most of these bullets, as you see on your screen. Everybody's a little bit different. And compared to the plan that was done most recently in 2017, which looked at not only Gaston County, but all the municipalities together as a unit, this plan focuses more on the Gaston County offerings. So we looked at it a little bit differently, but we still want to make sure there's an equitable distribution of park and recreation opportunities throughout the county. And in some of these bullets, I'll point out, continuing to do the partnerships within the municipalities and other agencies help to expand and increase opportunities for recreation. We call this a 10-minute rule that we use. That's actually a guide that comes from the National Recreation Park Association. We modify that a little bit to a 20-minute rule that we can get to a park or a greenway somehow within 20 minutes, not just being able to walk there. And it was important that Gaston County understand what they want to be in the park and recreation world. So what do they actually want to offer and manage as part of their department and offer their constituents for the next eight to 10 years? This is the plan that was in the 2017 model. And when I found this plan and looked at it, I thought, well, there's a lot of circles and arrows and all kinds of things on here. I wasn't quite sure what it meant, and nobody could really explain it to me other than it does look at every municipality, and all the circles represent distances out, certain mileage from parks throughout the county. Our charge was more to look at Gaston County facilities. So all of the red circles on here represent the various parks that are Gaston County-operated or facilities. So you're pretty well spread through the core, the center of the county as you go east to west. Need to get a few more going north and south, but most of your population right now is from about where the north part of those circles are going south. As we look at these, as we look at the updates, we sort of do, we do several things. We go out and look at the parks ourselves, look at the condition, what has changed since the previous plan. We do a random stratified survey. And this is critical for when county might apply for some of the grants that are available through the state, because they look at a random survey result. We also do public stakeholder meetings, and then we talk with staff and stakeholders and to understand all the needs. So we did do a survey through a subconsultant that we use. And this was done in December, January. And what that brought out in the end of the survey was, for facilities and amenities, they came up with what they call "high-priority investment items". And so that's in the survey where they ask a lot of questions regarding to, what parks do folks go to, what do they do in those in the parks, what kind of programs, activities? They collect a lot of demographic information. They ask a few tax questions in there, how do you fund parks? There's a lot of information. But we look at this program investment, which is basically looking at the importance that various households place on each program or activity, and then how many households have what they view as unmet needs through the county. So these eight items came out in the facilities and amenities, particularly with the trails and the greenway, which is pretty standard that they're at the top of lists just about everywhere we work and have been for years, but probably more so in the last three years, where that was the easy activity for folks to get out and take part in. Indoor fitness is getting back in, water access, folks wanting to have the ability to get to a river or a lake and get their canoe, kayak, or small boat in. Picnicking has come back up. It didn't used to be a big item, but over the last three years, it's back, and people wanting more shelters and a place to get out with their family. And then indoor event space, dog parks, and community gardens. On the program side, the top six that we looked at, adult fitness and wellness, outdoor events like music concerts or special events, arts and crafts, aquatic program, aquatics was mentioned a little bit earlier, outdoor adventure programs. We also had a couple of meetings. We still have a little problem sometimes getting folks out, but the folks that came out were very vocal. But a lot of the items they came up with in the meetings, as we presented, types of things you would find in these county parks, were very similar to what came out in the survey, and particularly focusing on a lot of passive recreation and being able to get out, walk, boat, bike. The 2017 plan, it's a little early to redo a plan. Usually, they're good for about eight to 10 years, but obviously, you have some demographic change as the population increases. The growth grows in slightly different directions. And Kathy and her department have accomplished a lot of the things in that 2017 plan. The goals that were set were making sure all the parks were brought up to an accessible level, so ADA everywhere, constructing new trails or greenways, adding spray grounds or splash pads, as some people call them, updated renovations that were much needed for many of the parks, and then looking at land for a new district park in both the northeast and northwestern part of the county. And as they have shown in their current advertisement, they've acquired a lot of things, both in the program side and providing activities throughout. ADA improvements have been made to most every park, except for Dallas Park, which is underway. The county did an ADA transition plan in 2018 of all the county facilities. Ironically, that was done by a company, Tindale Oliver, which became part of Benesh about a year ago. So it's nice to have those folks that I could talk to while we were going through this process. Constructing more greenway or trail. You have the new mountain bike trails at Poston Park, the learning trail at North Belmont, and then the Gaston Tech Dallas Park Connector that's currently in DOT review. So well on my way to getting to that five-mile piece out of those three to five. And we have a new splash pad at Dallas Park that'll be opening up. So we can check that one off. Many of the renovations that are listed here through several of the parks, a lot has happened at Dallas Park and at Poston Park. Tryon Park has an 18-hole disc golf course that's in design, will be going in soon. The playground replacement at North Belmont. So a lot of things have gone on since that plan. On the property acquisition, we had, that plan showed the acquisition of land, both northeast and northwest. That hasn't happened yet, but you've had the opportunity to look at about 550 acres at the south end of the county through Catawba Cove down by Stowe Gardens, so through partnership and through Duke Energy and Carolina Thread Trail Catawba Lands Conservancy. So that wasn't necessarily in the 2017 plan, but it's a big find because that area is growing of the county as well. So there's already been some conceptual planning done through Catawba Lands Conservancy on part of that acreage. Provides another area for some of that passive recreation that came out in our surveys and through our public meetings, trails, more mountain bike opportunities. Ties it in onto Carolina Thread Trail. If you remember the Carolina Thread Trail master plan that was done several years ago for Gaston County, one of the main routes was coming down from Spencer Mountain to tie into Stowe Gardens. So that is also happening or in the planning stage here, looking about 19 miles up the South Fork Corridor with the Catawba Cove at the south end and ending up at Spencer Mountain, Poston Park. So moving into some of our proposals and recommendations and in our plans over probably the last five years, we've actually dialed back on recommendations. We want to make sure they're all attainable. Everybody's fighting for the same budget money, so we don't want to put a lot of big visionary pictures. We want to make sure that things can be attainable and accountable for that. But trail connectivity remains popular and remains in demand. So perhaps looking at a countywide greenway master plan above and beyond what the Thread Trail has done, but folding that in, continuing to work with Catawba Lands Conservancy, work on that corridor coming down from Spencer Mountain, expand trails and opportunities at Dallas Park, which has probably the most land available right now. An opportunity to even partner with Duke Energy through perhaps a lease, South Point access area. Duke Energy provides recreation up and down the Catawba watery chain, and they do look for other vendors, so to speak, to help operate that. So this could be operated as a county park and provide that additional water access. Continue to build on accessibility, inclusivity in all the park facilities. Make sure that you can get from each element within a park easily. Make sure you can even get to the parks through the county. Make sure every park has some kind of a programming piece to it. Look for more venues for senior Olympics, which I think Gaston County has done a great job between not only the county, but the municipalities working together. Taking that Catawba Cove conceptual plans and make it a reality over time. And then, yes, seeking some new, still some new park development. It's easy to come into the existing parks and just simply add perimeter walking loops to provide additional walking opportunities. Still look for that opportunity for that northeast district park, but we've not put that northwest one in for right now. And then looking for areas that you might provide even some revenue-generation activities. And then continue working with the municipalities and other recreation providers to help keep that opportunity available within Gaston County. Making sure the parks are maintained and operated on equitable basis throughout. Bring back to that 15 to 20-minute, making sure we are accessible to parks, maybe not just Like bring back to that fifteen to twenty minute, making sure we are accessible to parks, maybe not just by Catawba County, but by the other municipalities. To make sure it's available for everybody. We set some guidelines in here to, to help the Park and Recreation Advisory Board as well, to help make them a good sounding board, to help Kathy and her department make decisions and in turn help you as a commission decide how best to fund and budget every year. Even have a little thing that Kathy probably not real excited about, but to meet the director and just her chance to go out and meet with folks around the town or around the county and to hear from them on a routine basis. All of these things, and certainly you have a lot of other things you're going to be talking about tonight, but when you start to increase those recreation offerings and opportunities and you look for land for parks, it does increase budgets, CIPs, maintenance costs, you know, everything that goes with it, staffing needs, equipment, insurance. But keeping those parks and recreation facilities well-maintained, that translates into more usage. It translates into safer park environments. We just see that all over the place. So our little map doesn't have as many circles at this time around. The purple ones we have added. We still need to look at a district park up in the northeast between Stanley and Mount Holly and the county line, particularly with the new development that's been recently approved up there on the Lincoln Gaston County line and, and the water and the river. Connecting that trail from Spencer Mountain down to Catawba Cove and, and developing that, that nineteen miles of corridor. Off to the west is really the only bullet we put on here that's not a Gaston County facility, but you know, the city of Gastonia is in the process of designing Lindwood Springs and converting that golf course into a passive, primarily a passive opportunity there that, that helps address some of the areas and get you closer to Crowder's Mountain. And then in the very southeast, I mentioned the South Point access opportunity. And that's something that'll be continued here in a near-future commission meeting, so I won't go into that at this point, but you can at least get a sense of what is, has been built there and part of the current renovations and potential opportunities on that. So the next steps of this body here, you know, to consider this master plan update for the county in terms of accepting it or adopting it, which helps the Park and Rec then start to plan for the future and look at additional grant funding and where the next steps are. Helps with that decision-making. Working together with the Park and Rec Advisory Board to help some of these things happen as well. Balance needs with all your other budget requests and work on that three-to-five-year CIP for Park and Recreation implementation. Continue to look at those grant, particularly like part-of-grants and LLCF grants that are offered through the state. And just, it's all goes to help strive to improve that quality of life that so many people like here in Gaston County and are bringing people to the county at the same time. So with that, I will open it up to, to any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Any comments or concerns or questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Seeing none, thank you so much, sir, for everything you've done tonight. And we will get with that and Ms. Hart with, within Dr. Eagle. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. The Commission will take citizens' comments on six public hearings. Comments will be taken on the following issues. Excuse me, zoning map change REZ dash one forty-four, zoning map change REZ dash one forty-five, zoning map change REZ dash one forty-six, text amendment, text zero, zero, eight, incentive grant for Crow Holdings, incentive grant for Project Taika. Before we begin, let me outline the rules and procedures of the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comments will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens' comments will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. All questions shall be directed to the chair for response. The chair shall rule in all points of order. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? We are now in public hearing. The County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearings, zoning map change REZ one forty-four. Hope I say this right, Gina? Jenna. Chief Ferris, applicant, Ms. Laura Hamilton, Planning Three, Builder and Development Services, will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken, Ms. Hamilton.
Good evening. Rezoning REZ twenty-three dash zero-three dash zero-two dash zero-zero-one-four-four is a general rezoning request from Jenna Ferris, with the property owners being Jenna Ferris and Just Chilling Holdings LLC. The property parcel is one-six-five-seven-eight-one. The location is three-nine-three-four, Pughitz Chapel Road. The rezoning request is for rezoning from R two, single-family moderate, to C one, light commercial. This property is a four-point-five-six acre parcel in the northwest area of the county between Dallas-Cherville Highway and Ike Lynch Road on the Pughitz Chapel Road. This parcel is in Area Two, North three-twenty-one Gaston, North Central Gaston Land Use Area. It is in the rural designation. This designation amplifies Gaston County and the existing natural resources that exist throughout the jurisdiction. This also meets Goal Eight by increasing economic development throughout the county and improving viable job opportunities by focusing on retain and focusing on retaining and growing small businesses within Gaston County. This parcel has a, an existing commercial building, which was constructed between nineteen sixty-eight, nineteen seventy-nine. A second structure was built in nineteen ninety-four for Monday Machine Shop. The current owner is wanting to make the rezoning request and to make the machine shop more conforming and possibly add another structure. All of the options to expand the businesses were explained to the applicant before the rezoning request was submitted. It is surrounded by wooded, residential, and farm use areas. If approved, any of the uses allowed in the C one zoning light commercial district would be permitted in accordance with the regulations adopted by the Gaston County Unified Development Ordinance. The Gaston Cleveland, the MPO, according to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-nine STIP, there's no funded transportation improvement projects to the immediate vicinity area of the site. A proposed unfunded minor road improvement to Pughitz Chapel Road is included in the CTP program to modernize the road, widening the existing travel lanes to twelve feet with wide shoulders. The existing roadway along Pughitz Chapel Road is sufficient for the proposed improvements. Staff feels the application as presented is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. The Planning Board had good discussion on the impact of the existing use and any expansions of it versus allow, other allowed uses in the proposed zoning district. There was some concern about the increased traffic impacting the neighbors with the change of use. Some board members felt that some of the uses allowed in the C one zoning district would impact the neighbors more than others and questioned why the applicant wasn't pursuing a conditional rezoning process. Staff, we informed the Planning Board that we could not require an applicant to go through a conditional rezoning process and that both rezoning options were shared with the applicant. Staff also explained that the current use has been on the property for several decades, which makes it an, an existing non-conforming situation. Bringing the property's use into compliance with the zoning regulations is in line with the UDO and the comprehensive land use plan. The motion was made to recommend approval for the request as presented on the fact of the request is reasonable and in the public interest and is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive land use plan, as it will keep the existing parcel light commercial in nature as envisioned by the rural land use designation and meets Goal Eight of the land use plan, which focuses on increasing the economic development by supporting and improving viable job opportunities. The Planning Board, when they met on April third, with this vote, this motion, it was not carried with a tie vote of four to four. We have not received any calls in the office, or I did not receive any calls in the office on this case. The sign was posted on four-twelve of twenty-three, and the notices were mailed out on four-ten of twenty-three. That is my presentation, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Any comments from the applicants at this time? Mr. Ferris, please step up. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Greg Ferris. I live at nine oh five Thompson Avenue, Bessemer City, North Carolina. Property in discussion right now is where we currently operate our, one of our facilities. And we have for many years so far. Basically, the way the zoning stands now, we're not allowed to do anything. I can't add on, I can't do anything except for what we do now that we've done in the past. And our whole idea is, is really nothing elaborate. We just, you know, it's hard to go spend a lot of money and come back and say, here's what we want to do. Basically, turning to C one or light commercial is basically so we can add a little bit more area on if need be under the current operations we're running now without having to come back and forth. It's still got to meet guidelines, you know, and it gives us a set of guidelines to go by if we choose to add on, to come back to the departments and say, here's what we want to do at this time. So, you know, we appreciate the consideration and we're here to answer any questions you may have. And we appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Any citizens wishing to comment on this matter at this time? Seeing none, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? I have one. Just want to make sure this will put this in compliance, correct?
This will put it in more compliance of the current use in the zoning district.
Just to recap, the Planning Board did not make a recommendation for this case. The motion of approval failed to carry. I will make the motion to approve this as the chairman, since it was a tie. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any, any comments? Discussion, same thing? Yes, sir. Mr. Hovis?
If they make any changes as far as that they want to add on, expand, as he.
Correct, that's the purpose, that's the purpose of the rezoning is so he can do that without being restricted because he's non-conforming.
Yes, sir. There's a type D buffer requirement between res, commercial and residential.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that.
Yes.
I have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Mr. Johnson?
So what do they want to use the building for now?
It is currently a machine shop, and they are still continuing to use it as a machine shop.
Okay, so if, I'm looking at the supporting documents here. So they can change it to a lot of different things that they like, right?
If the rezoning is approved, yes, ma'am, anything in the C one zoning could potentially be there.
So there would be nothing we could do about it if they go and make it a, let's see. I mean, there's several things in here they could do with it. If we change it, correct? Is that why there was such a four-to-four vote?
That is part of the reasoning is the C one, some of the uses, but also possible traffic increase due to some of the potential uses that could be there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, which speaking this time? I've actually been to this machine shop several times and with the surrounding area, I think that it, and what they're wanting to do and maybe enhances a little more than what's happening. I'm looking to approve this, so I have the motion. There's a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The unanimous decision, Madam Clerk. The next item, the Commission will now take citizens' comments, public hearings, zoning map change REZ one forty-five. Duane Jordan, applicant, Ms. Peyton Ratchford, our newest. Sorry, Bill, if you'd like, please give a consistency statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive land use plan as it will keep the existing parcel light commercial in nature as envisioned by the rural future land use designation and meets Goal Eight of the comprehensive land use plan, which focuses on increasing economic development by supporting and improving viable job opportunities. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, I cut you off, sir. But we will now ask Ms. Peyton Ratchford, our newest planner too. Building and Development Services will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Ratchford, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ twenty-three dash oh-three dash fifteen dash zero-zero-one-four-five is a general rezoning request from Duane Jordan for parcel ID number one-four-five-five-nine-nine. This property is located at forty-five forty-five Crowder's Crest Drive in Gastonia and is approximately point-six-nine acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone from R one, single-family limited, with urban standards overlay to R three, single-family general with U.S. urban standards overlay. This first map shows that the property is located in the Gastonia township in South Gastonia, west of Highway three-twenty-one. This ortho photo map shows that the subject parcel and, and identifies that the parcel is vacant. The subject parcel is surrounded by other residential properties and wooded areas. Surrounding properties consist of a mix of stick-built and manufactured single-family residential homes. Also, there is an existing mobile home park across Crowder's Crest Drive on Only Street. This map shows the current zoning within the area. The subject parcel is outlined in blue. The surrounding zoning districts include R one, R three, C one, and C three scattered throughout the area. The property is in a heavily residential area of the county. If this request is approved, any uses within the R three, single-family general zoning district would be permitted in accordance with standards and regulations as adopted in the UDO. This map and table show who was notified about tonight's public hearing. Notices were mailed out and a sign was placed on-site in accordance with general statutes. Staff has not received any comments or inquiries about this request. The subject parcel is located in Area Five, scenic Gaston of the comprehensive land use plan. Key, excuse me, key issues for citizens in this area include preservation of open space, roadway improvements, better connectivity to other areas of the county, preservation of existing conditions while allowing low to moderate growth, repurpose of vacant buildings and facilities for new economic opportunities, and increased commercial opportunities along existing major thoroughfares. The future land use designation for this area is rural community. This is in largely rural areas where there are a number of residential buildings on smaller lots and built closer to the roadway. When driving through these areas, you'll feel like you are in a neighborhood. The GCL MPO provided a comment letter that stated there are no planned transportation improvement plans on the STIP, MTP, or the CPT. The Planning Board heard this request at its April third meeting. There was no discussion and recommended approval by a six-to-one vote. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any comments from the applicants at this time? Okay, are there any comments, any citizens' comments to be made on this issue at this time? Seeing none, are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Motion to approve the request, Mr. Chairman.
Just to recap, the Planning Board recommended approval by a vote of seven to one. I have a motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Stetser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive land use plan as it will keep the parcel residential in nature as envisioned by the rural community future land use designation. The proposed use in district will also allow for preservation of existing conditions in the area while allowing low to moderate growth in the scenic Gaston area of the comprehensive land use plan.
Thank you, sir. The Gaston County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearings, zoning map change REZ one forty-six. Jason M. Negra is the applicant. Ms. Peyton Ratchford, Planning Two, Building and Development Services, will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken, Ms. Ratchford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ dash twenty-three dash oh-three dash twenty-one dash zero-zero-one-four-six is a general rezoning request from Mr. Jason Negra for a portion of parcel ID number one-five-six-three-eight-nine. The total property acreage is a hundred-and-twenty-six point-zero-eight acres, and the applicant is requesting to rezone one-point-eight-zero-seven acres from the R one zoning district to the R two zoning district. The property is located off of Lewis Road in Kings Mountain. The subject parcel is located in the southwestern portion of the county. Previously, the lot went through the subdivision process earlier this year, and the plat was recorded in March. The new parcel has, has not yet been mapped or assigned a new parcel ID. So the request for a portion of the parcel, so the request is for a portion of the parent parcel. Once the new parcel is mapped according to the approved subdivision, if approved, the R two zoning district would only be applied to the new lot. This is a copy of the approved subdivision plat. The new lot is in the northern portion of the parent lot and will have direct access off of Lewis Road, which is an NCDOT-maintained road. which is an NC DOT maintained road. The site will have well and septic systems and be required to obtain a driveway permit. The property is in a heavily residential area of the county. Surrounding parcels are zoned R1, R2, and R3. If this request is approved, any uses in the R2 Single Family Moderate zoning district would be permitted in accordance with standards and regulations as adopted in the UDO. This map shows who all was notified with information about tonight's public hearing. Four of the adjacent properties are all owned by the same property owner. Notices were mailed out and a sign was placed on the lot in accordance with general statutes. Staff has not yet received any calls or inquiries about this request. This slide shows who all received a mailed out notice. The subject parcel is located in Area 5, scenic Gaston of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Please note, the staff report initially identified this property within Area 1 and I just want to make a correction that the subject parcel is actually within Area 5 of the comp plan. The consistency statement and future land use designation were both originally correct. Key issues for citizens in this area include the preservation of open space, road improvements, and better connectivity to other areas of the county, preservation of existing conditions while allowing low to moderate growth, repurpose vacant buildings and facilities for new economic opportunities, and increase commercial opportunities along existing major thoroughfares. The future land use designation is rural. This designation is characterized by having plenty of open space along with farmstead-style housing and agribusiness. Residential homes are located on large lots and are set back from the roads they front upon. The GCL MPO provided a comment letter that stated there are no planned transportation improvement plans on the MTP or the CTP. However, the CTP does show bike facility improvements along Lewis Road. Another comment, Natural Resources, informed staff that the parent parcel is under a conservation easement with a Cataba Land Conservancy. However, the proposed use and rezoning for this portion of the lot does not interfere with the conservation agreement. The Planning Board, excuse me, the Planning Board heard this request at its April 3 meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the request. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any comments from applicant at this time? Seeing none, are there any citizens wishing to comment on this issue at this time? Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Just to recap, the Planning Board has unanimously recommended approval of this. Do I hear a motion to approve this? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Stetser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This request is consistent with the goals of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan as it will keep the parcel residential in nature and maintain the rural feel of the area, which is consistent with the Rural Future Land Use Designation of the parcel and the vision of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Thank you, sir. The County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing, zoning text amendment, text 008, Gaston County Planning Board, the applicant. I will now ask Ms. Peyton Ratchford, Planning 2, Business Building and Development Services, will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Ratchford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Text-23-03-21-0008 is a request from the Planning Board to amend the definition of dwelling, small home, in Chapter 2 of the UDO. The proposed amendment would allow these structures to be up to 1,000 square feet and remove all references to tiny houses or tiny homes. Staff was approached by a developer who let us know that the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency requires two-bedroom dwelling units to have a minimum of 850 square feet to qualify for financing. The current definition in the UDO restricts small homes to 800 square feet, which would restrict financing options for developers. The original amendment to the definition allows small homes to be up to 850 square feet. However, during the Planning Board meeting earlier this month, the Planning Board members asked staff where the original 800-square-foot cap came from. Staff explained that the 800-square-foot cap was in the original definition and this wasn't something that was addressed when developing the small home community use. Staff and members of the Planning Board worked together to come up with a number that made sense. Private residential quarters, or PRQs, are another residential dwelling type that is allowed on residential lots by right. These are typically referred to as mother-in-law suites but are ultimately smaller secondary residential dwellings. PRQs are restricted in size. They can be no greater than 50% of the ground floor of the principal dwelling unit or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. Staff and the Planning Board felt like 1,000 square feet would be a good size restriction for small homes and small home communities. This also allows for flexibility in floor plans and rooms for financing for these types of dwellings. This slide shows the proposed text change. We would be replacing 800 with 1,000 and removing the references to tiny homes and tiny houses. Staff and the Planning Board during discussion felt that by removing these references, we could help clear up some misconceptions about what a small house is. Tiny homes are often portrayed as movable structures while small homes, by our ordinance, have to be built on-site and built to the North Carolina Building Codes and they would not be able to be moved. Our hope is that by removing these references to tiny homes and tiny houses, we can help clear up any misconceptions and small homes are not intended to be movable. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any citizens' comments at this time on this issue? Seeing none, are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none, I will close now, close the public hearing. Just to recap, the Planning Board has unanimously recommended approval of this. I will now accept anybody for a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Stetser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This text change is consistent with Goal 6 of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan as it will allow for financing of small house dwelling units, which can be seen as a form of affordable housing and will allow the county to attract and retain many populations, including young professionals.
Thank you, sir. The County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearings to approve Level 3 or Level 4 incentive grant and authorize an economic development agreement with Crow Holdings. Mr. Donnie Hicks, EDC Director, will provide a brief overview. Once he has completed his comments, citizens' comments will be taken. The hottest man of the year, Mr. Hicks, keep it going.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. I had need to use the projector if possible. I got a site plan for you. So tonight, we're here for one of the similar things you've approved in the past and that would be some incentives for new buildings to be built in Gaston County. There are two buildings that we anticipate that Crow Holdings will build off Shannon Bradley Road. I have a site plan if I can get the screen to work. And there are two buildings, 420,000 square feet and 280,000 square feet. Those fit in the middle range size of what has been built recently and the market has really pulled back to more of a 300,000, 400,000 square foot market from where we thought it would be a couple of months ago where it was 500, 700, 800 million square feet. So those buildings will be built starting in the summer, finished in the first quarter of '24. And we anticipate the tax value would be right at 49 million. So that's why you see us having a Level 3, Level 4. We didn't want to have to come back to you to prove the same thing if it were 51 million. So it gives the owner the opportunity either way. And it's so close that almost no one could project where it's going to be, but it should be right at $50 million, which would qualify for Level 4. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any citizens wishing to comment at this time? Seeing none, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? If there are no additional comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. But I want to say, Donnie, thank you to you and your staff. Man, you guys have been just bowling it over lately and we are so proud of you guys.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve this? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve Level 1 incentive grant and authorize an economic development agreement with Project Taika. Ms. Sarah Gilbert-Kay, Economic Project Administrator, provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Gilbert-Kay.
Good evening. Project Taika has proposed to build, to construct one building used for manufacturing and distribution on Lander's Chapel Road. This is a total investment of approximately $1.3 million and 15,000 square feet. It is anticipated that with Project Taika's investment, they would qualify for a Level 1 grant incentive. This project is made up of $800,000 in real estate and $500,000 in equipment. The company anticipates adding three to four more, three or four more employees with an average salary of $50,000 per year. This project is anticipated to generate $48,000 of tax revenue per year for Gaston County. We are requesting a Level 1 grant incentive for Project Taika.
Any citizens wishing to comment on this at this time? Seeing none, any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property in question is already zoned for this use?
Yes.
That's the only question I have, Mr. Chairman.
I will make the motion for this one. A second is needed. Seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, it is unanimous, Madam Clerk. This concludes tonight's public hearing and we will move right into the business agenda and then we'll take a brief recess before we go into the last part of approval of the business agenda. Are there any revisions that need to be given to the business agenda that needs, items that need to be pulled?
Motion to approve is writ, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Approval of the minutes, you provided a draft of the minutes before the meeting of, the regular meeting of 2:28. Are there any revisions? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. We've done citizen recognition. Approval of the consent agenda, no items to pull tonight. I want to make a point of important Gaston County proclamation for the month of April where sign adopted under tonight's consent agenda that were signed. Proclamation will be forwarded to the departments. April 16th through 22nd was Volunteer Week. April 9th through the 15th has Animal Care Enforcement Week and Appreciation Week. April 9th through the 15th, Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. April 3rd through the 9th was Public Health Week. And month of April of 2023 was Child Abuse Month. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Items pulled, none from the consent agenda appointments. Commissioner Fraley. Commissioner Worley.
Yes, sir.
Take your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one for the Animal Care and Enforcement Advisory Board. It's a reappointment of Lynn, Ms. Lynn Whiteside. I'd make that a motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Kloniger. No, Mr. Johnson.
No appointments at this time.
Commissioner Hovis.
Mr. Chair, I have none tonight.
Thank you, sir. I have one. Application received from Mr. Brian Wineth for the Gaston County Fire Commission. Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. I have one, Central Island's Council Governor for an alternate. Anybody who wanted to fulfill that seat is going. Commissioner Hovis is the voting delegate.
I volunteer.
Commissioner Worley. All in favor? Thank you, Madam Clerk, it is unanimous. We'll come back for yours on that when we get that filled out. Other matters, any other matters need to come before this board at this time? Reports, Mr. Fraley.
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Worley.
None tonight.
Mr. Kloniger.
I have a question.
Okay.
I wanted to let everyone know that I attended, which some of the other commissioners as well did, to the Lighthouse grand opening, which was totally phenomenal here in our community. It's located on the complex of City Church and I wanted to really challenge our community to stay involved and to get involved because it's so important to complete partnerships and relationships when we work for our children in our community. I also attended the Rise Above Traveling Exhibit. That was highlighting the Takashi Airman Pilots during World War II at Tamaracko Baptist Church. And then I watched a movie that talked about the bravery and the desire to do what was right. They are, as well as portraying a group of women called the WASP, which was the Women's Air Force Service Pilots. I also attended the 2022 Office of the Year banquet for Bismarck City Police Department where awards were given. And I also attended the Cherry Blossom Festival in Chapel. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
No reports.
Mr. Hovis.
Mr. Chair, I have no reports.
Thank you. I wanted to second that about the blessings of the Lighthouse. If you see in front of me, if Todd can zoom in on that, we had to find one. But the anchors were given out to the stakeholders that go about and what it has to make everybody aware. Before, we had a hammer that was stamping out some of the abuse and things that happened. But now we have an anchor and anchoring ourselves to the Lighthouses, which is located at?
3150 City Church Street.
3150 City Church Street. That is just below Teetown or whatever the new name is. But I wanted to let you guys know, Todd, Barry, can you turn around and get, will you stand up if you're involved in the Lighthouse? Greg, you involved, stand up. And this is our staff that coordinates everything through there. So thank you so much and congratulations on your new home. If you don't know what the Lighthouse is, the Lighthouse was an 800-square-foot basement office and they had to bring children or people who had been victimized in there. They had to talk to them in front. But now, we have a lovely home and I'm going to ask you to explain a little bit about what it is.
Yes, so the Lighthouse is our Children's Advocacy Center, which serves child abuse victims of physical abuse, sexual abuse, or when children have witnessed extreme violence. So they're able to come in and receive forensic interviews, medical services, therapy services. And the beautiful new 8,000-square-foot space was really created with their entire healing journey in mind. And from this time they step in until they step out, they're wrapped around with comfort.
Is someone there 24 hours?
We are available 24 hours. We are not on-site 24 hours.
Just want to make sure. Thank you so much and thank you guys for continued success.
Thank you.
County Attorney's Report.
New report.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to take a five-minute recess just so the board can freshen up and then we'll come right back out and the manager can give her report. Thank you.
...
...
...
...
We are now back into the meeting process. Thank you for your moments of courteous. Let us take a five-minute recess, but now we're out of recess, and we will continue with the agenda and reports. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight I have the presentation on the FY24 operating budget and the FY24 through '28 capital budget. I'll direct you to your seats. You have some additional information that I will refer to as I move through the presentation. So, good evening, members of the Board, Chairman, county employees, and county residents. It's an honor and a privilege to serve as your county manager and present my recommended budget. I remain incredibly grateful to my team, our directors, our budget staff, and to you for your leadership and support throughout the entire process. The total recommended budget is $414 million, and the general fund portion of that is $322 million. A budget is a plan. It's an estimate for a set period of time. The steps we took to balance this budget in order to give maximum relief to the taxpayers is unique. The level of effort required to absorb inflationary costs, continue to provide adequate service levels, and reduce revenues below revenue neutral is possible for this budget, but is not sustainable as a standard practice. I am recommending a tax rate of 61 cent per 100 of assessed value. This is a 20-cent decrease from the current rate and below revenue neutral. This recommended budget maintains a conservative fiscal approach and achieves three broad goals. First, the recommended budget funds only programs and initiatives that align with the Board of Commissioners' top priorities. Second, it funds only the county's core critical services and programs. And last, the budget absorbs the unprecedented levels of inflation while lowering the tax rate significantly. So tonight, I will first provide an overview of the recommended budget and then give the numbers some context related to revaluation, economic and population growth, increases in service demand, and inflation. Then I will go into more detail about the general operating budget and the five-year capital plan. Then I'll share information on the path forward. In addition to this presentation, you all have a copy of the recommended budget book at your seat, which provides a significant level of detail about everything I'll cover here tonight and even more. In my time serving as your county manager, the budget theme has transitioned from responsiveness when we were in the middle of COVID-19 and tasked with providing quick but safe emergency services, to resiliency coming out of the pandemic and facing economic uncertainty while restoring in-person services, to readiness, preparing our organization to face challenges with an eye toward our unpredictable future. This brings us to the FY24 theme of responsibility. Following a revaluation process that saw massive growth in our tax base, it is crucial that we are a responsible steward of these resources, using them to further our mission to provide excellent public service every day. Our new strategic plan, which I'll talk about in more detail later, you have a copy at your seat, is built around the mission and will provide another layer of responsibility and accountability by tracking performance measures and outcomes related to our services. So following the 2023 revaluation, I'm recommending a 61-cent tax rate. This is a 20-cent decrease from the current rate of 81 cents and lower than the published revenue-neutral rate of 62.1 cents. Capturing sales tax growth and the strategic appropriation of CIF fund balance allow us to absorb mandatory and inflationary increases in personnel and operating expenses while reducing the tax rate significantly and not appropriating unrestricted fund balance. In terms of personnel, I'm recommending 23 new positions, 19 of which are either 100% fee-funded or 50% to 75% federally funded and tied to unfunded mandates. The remaining four are 100% county-funded and are essential to maintain our facilities and vehicles, given the massive growth we are experiencing. In addition, I'm recommending that we continue to fund the board-directed merit-based compensation plan. I'm recommending a 3% to be implemented at mid-year for a 1.5% budget impact compared to the current year. The recommended budget provides 1% increases in operating allocations for both Gaston County Schools and Gaston College, no increase in their capital allocations, and includes funding to fulfill all debt service obligations, including the new school debt that we're in the process of issuing. So as I mentioned earlier, the recommended budget is $414 million for all funds. The general fund makes up 72% of the county's budget and will be the primary focus for this presentation. The community investment fund accounts for 16% of the budget and includes county debt service, school debt service, and capital projects over $300,000. A breakdown of revenue and expenditures for every fund can be found in the recommended budget ordinance at the end of the budget document, beginning on page 97 of your book. This year, staff aligned the budget process with an update of the county's new five-year strategic plan, which I'll talk about more later. In addition to the budget and the strategic planning work, this is the second year that the staff CIP committee has evaluated and prioritized proposed projects, resulting in the capital budget I'm recommending to you tonight. I am grateful to the staff across all of our departments. They took the time to participate in numerous budget, CIP, and strategic planning meetings, workshops, and presentations. That important work laid the foundation for the thoughtful and complex but succinct budget and strategic plan documents that you're receiving tonight. The newly updated five-year strategic plan, in concert with the priorities and interests of the Board and the five focus areas defined in the ONE Gaston 2040 Vision Framework, serve as the internal roadmap to ensure our work as an organization supports your policy direction. The five-year plan for the 2024-2028 time period includes 14 organizational goals and more than 90 strategic objectives to address key issues facing our communities within the county. The goals and objectives within this plan exemplify our continued commitment to the organization's mission of providing excellent public service every day. There is a large one-page infographic that summarizes the strategic plan at your seat. These are the guiding principles that have led the budget process, and these will look familiar to you. First is to implement sound fiscal policy and stewardship. Second is to deliver competitive services. Next is to diversify our revenues. And fourth is to prepare for growth through investment in our infrastructure. Before I proceed further into the budget, I want to take a moment to recognize some of the very significant accomplishments that your organization has made over the last year. First, I'll talk about community health, safety, and well-being. Public Health implemented new methods of outreach, including the Walk and Roll Together Gaston Event and planning for new mobile medical units. Additionally, the New Language Line offers onsite telephone and video interpreting services for multiple languages and the American Sign Language. County Police led in the creation of the Gaston Recovery Court. Additionally, we have obtained a $1.2 million grant to establish the first law enforcement-assisted diversion program in Gaston County. Our telecommunications division continued to answer 911 calls faster than the national average time, decreased their vacancy rate by 50%, and began utilization of automated fire dispatch. Next, I'll talk about recreation, cultural, and lifelong learning. Social Services referrals to our Cooperative Extension's Triple P Parenting Education Program more than doubled. In 2022, the program graduated 44 parents, 97 of whom demonstrated improved parenting skills. In addition, we provided over 1,700 Gaston County residents with food nutrition programming and engaged 820 youth in school gardening programs. Tourism Development. Their business development team brought in 46 events, generating over 17,000 hotel stays and direct economic impact of over $7.5 million. And lastly, but not least, economic development and planned growth. Our EDC, as you well know, opened at Apple Creek. That corporate center, as of January, was opened, and now more than half of the sites are already sold. Public Works completed several major projects, including the public health parking lot replacement, the Tryon Park ADA renovations and facility improvements, the Dallas Park splash pad, and the main library renovation. They have also worked to increase our overall MWE bid participation to almost 13%. And the Tax Office obtained the Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration through the International Association of Assessing Offices. They achieved a, we achieved a collection rate of 99.1% for the fiscal year 2021 and successfully completed the 2023 property appraisal, which included extensive public engagement, as you know, and ongoing appeals. So, speaking of property tax work, the total projected assessed valuation following the '23 revaluation is $30.9 billion, a 41% increase from FY23. As mentioned in the executive summary, the budget recommends a 20-cent tax rate cut to 61 cent per 100 in assessed value. The county is currently on a four-year cycle, as you know, for revaluation, which lined up with our 2023 revaluation process. We would be required to do a revaluation regardless due to our low sales assessment ratio. Sales assessment ratios are published by the North Carolina Department of Revenue and measure the level of appraisal. Ratios less than 100 mean appraised values are lower than market or sales prices. Gaston's 68.67 rate means that prior to revaluation, our appraised values were only capturing 68% of the market value. Keep in mind that that 68% rate was calculated as of January 1, 2022. It does not capture the last year's worth of growth. The graph on the right on the slide shows our sales assessment ratio compared to select peer and surrounding counties. The year of the county's most recent revaluation is noted underneath the county name. Notably, Gaston's sales assessment ratio is lower than the three included counties who last had a revaluation in 2019, when we did, Mecklenburg, Lincoln, and Catawba. Significant tax base and population growth means growth in the demand for our county services. I will quickly highlight just a few examples of this growth many of our departments are experiencing. Our public safety agencies are seeing an increase in calls for service. Jim's staff, for instance, are being pushed beyond our reasonable capacity. We measure ambulance productivity with unit-hour utilization. National standards advise that the ideal range for that unit-hour utilization is between .3 and .5. Above .5, we are pushing our units too much. Since 2020, more than half of our unit hours are above that standard. This is not sustainable for our employees and could threaten the quality of our emergency response if not addressed in the coming years. Animal intake and euthanasia. ACE is steadily decreasing the number of animals we're impounding, and the euthanasia rate has decreased along with that. This is a great accomplishment. ACE has worked hard to improve practices, and through this work, they've reduced instances of shelter overcrowding and euthanasia. This is the result of years of educating, assisting, and partnering with the community to develop alternate solutions that keep animals from coming to the shelter, especially when we are full and calls are increasing. After a drop, as you're well aware, in building inspection permits in 2020 due to COVID, we have seen a steady and speedy recovery to pre-pandemic levels. Development has ramped up again. With this continued growth comes increased service demands and infrastructure needs. Our human services are feeling the impact of growth as well. The number of children aged 0 to 17 in DSS custody has grown tremendously in the past several years, 12% between 2018 and 2022. The chart on the screen shows the number of children in custody, but we have also seen... The chart on the screen shows the number of children in custody, but we have also seen an increase in the overall rate when controlling for population growth. Despite significant increases in service demand, we have managed to keep our per capita spending low. This graph shows a 10-year history of expenditures per capita. The county's population has grown by 22% since 2002. We are spending slightly less per capita compared to 20 years ago, from $1,390 per citizen in 2002 to $1,346 in 2021. The bottom line is that we're doing more with less, a lot less, due to inflation and demands are increasing. Let me elaborate on the severity of the inflationary pressures that we're absorbing in the budget. The cumulative impact of inflation since 2020 is nearly 15%, with a 9% increase in the past year alone. We have not seen inflation rise so sharply since the late '70s. In other words, $10 today has the same buying power as $8.55 in 2020. During that time period, we have held expenditures per capita flat. We're really doing more with less. Now I'll transition into the general fund operating budget. As I mentioned earlier, I'm recommending $322 million for that general fund budget. More details on the drivers compared to current year are in the budget message in your book on pages 1 to 10. There's lots of detail there. More than 3/4 of the general fund budget goes to human services, public safety, and public education. This graph shows the revenue sources for the general fund budget. Taxes, including property tax, sales tax, and other taxes like excise taxes, make up 75%, nearly 75% of general fund revenue. So let's start with property tax. Property tax revenue is the county's largest and most stable revenue source. This revenue is projected using a total assessed value of $30.9 billion. That total assessed value, including projected appeal loss, is multiplied by an estimated collection rate and a tax rate to equal the estimated property tax revenue. As previously stated, I'm recommending 61 cent as the tax rate. This is the lowest rate since at least 1970. Using those figures, the calculated tax levy is $186 million. Sales tax revenue is next. It's traditionally more volatile than property tax revenue, but is now the county's second-largest revenue source. We have traditionally been very conservative when budgeting and projecting sales tax. For the FY '20 budget, '21 budget, as you see there, we made the decision to budget less than sales tax due to the uncertainty surrounding the short-term effects of the pandemic. We continue to see growth in sales tax now, and although it's somewhat a slower rate, due in part to increases in inflation. In FY '24, for this recommended budget, we're projecting sales tax to match what we feel is realistic, less conservative in the amount than previous years, to account for those gains that we've seen. Capturing this growth is a significant factor, and decreasing the tax rate is recommended. User fees. User fees are accounted by taking the actual cost of that service delivery and charging the actual amount as the price for the service changes over time. The recommended budget continues the fee schedule methodology approved by the board in March of '21. The recommended fee schedule begins on page 102 of your budget book. This plan includes user fee increases that were intentionally phased in using a three-year plan to lessen the impact of large year-over-year increases. The increase in projected revenue is largely driven by the consolidation with the city of Gastonia and resulting increases in inspection fees. This graph shows the projected general fund expenditures by function. More than 3/4 goes toward public safety, human services, and education, very similarly to previous comment. So I want to spend some time talking about personnel. And first, I want to highlight the graph on the right. The number of employees per 100 county residents has gone from 142 to 135 in the last 20 years. This means that county staffing levels are not keeping pace with population growth. With that in mind, I'm recommending the 23 full-time positions for the FY '24 budget. As I mentioned earlier, several of those have outside revenue sources. For social services, there are 14 Economic Services caseworkers and two Economic Services supervisors. These positions are 75% funded with federal dollars. Because Medicaid expansion has now passed in our state, Gaston County is expected to have an additional 10,300 eligible cases. There is also included one Client Services technician that's 50% funded with federal dollars, and that is a dedicated technology position to serve as a subject matter expert within social services to respond quickly to emergency situations. Transitioning to natural resources. There is a conservationist position included in the budget, fully funded through Natural Resources departmental revenues. There is also a floodplain administrator, also fully funded by fees from Natural Resources. And then I come to the four positions that I am recommending that are fully funded with county dollars. First, there's an electrician. This position will offset currently outsourced labor costs and enable Public Works to launch a preventative maintenance program. There is a plumber assistant. Current staff completed almost 1,500 work requests for an average of around 5 and 1/2 a day this past year. They work 610 hours of overtime and a minimum of six days a week, every week. Many times, they work several weeks in a row without a day off. We need to balance this workload. There is an HVAC technician. This calendar year, the HVAC techs that we have on staff completed 3,400 work requests. This averages about 4 and 1/2 a day. And lastly, there's an auto tech. The growth of our fleet has outpaced existing workload capacity. Technicians are also expected to maintain an efficient delivery of vehicles so that our downtime is maintained. So as you can see, the 23 positions being recommended only scrapes the surface. If you take a look, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong slide. Okay. If you take a look at this slide here, there were 133 new full-time positions requested in this year's budget process. I'm going to share a few highlights on these. First, the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office faces a number of issues each day in the jail specifically, including mental health concerns, substance abuse, and overdose cases. To help combat the challenges within the jail, the sheriff's office requested 20 additional detention officers, two sworn deputy sheriffs in field services, and one deputy sheriff for special services. County Police. For ACE, a community cat coordinator was requested to manage the trap-and-release program, which decreases cat intakes at the shelter. Approximately, in this county, we have over 30,000 feral cats. An Internet Crimes Against Children investigator was requested due to the number of cases increasing dramatically over the last two years. And an overdose fatality investigator was also requested. We're seeing a dramatic increase in overdose cases, and there's a need for more investigators to help prosecute the death-by-distribution cases that we're seeing in this county. And lastly, I'll highlight JIM's. I referenced the workload demands earlier. 12 additional EMTs to upstaff our quick-response vehicles and to increase coverage during peak call times were requested. 10 additional EMTs for additional BLS units needed both for coverage and to maintain and preserve response capabilities, and one trainer to improve safety were all requested. We saw several departments, including Public Works, Finance, and the Tax Department, request data analyst or process improvement positions. This reflects our growing commitment to being a data-informed workforce, but also indicates the need for new skill sets and workload capacity in these analytical areas. We have fewer employees per citizen, as I mentioned earlier, and this means growing workloads and increased burnout and potentially turnover. Last year's budget included zero new positions with county funding, and I'm recommending four this year with county funding. County departments for years have operated under tight budget conditions. This year's no different. For example, we routinely have reduced discretionary spending by delaying needed software that would make our operations more efficient, by reducing training opportunities that would make our workforce more efficient and effective. We cut down on the number of office and printing supplies needed to run operations in order to make it possible to absorb nondiscretionary inflationary increases. This graph shows examples of these nondiscretionary expenses, such as professional service contracts, fuel, parts, and compares these increases to the change in the tax rate. In addition, temporary services continue to rise as demand grows, and we're using these in some cases in lieu of adding full-time positions. I'll transition now to public education. The public education operating allocations are the county's single-largest operating expense. These tables show the allocations I'm recommending for Gaston County Schools and Gaston College compared to the current-year funding and their request for FY '24. For Gaston County Schools, I'm recommending a $500,000 increase in operating allocation and a flat capital allocation. This increase on the operating side is intended to be used for teacher supplements, which the board has funded since 2014. In addition to these allocations for the schools, the county funds salaries and benefits for school resource officers, the Commissioner's School of Excellence Program, and debt service obligations for debt issued on behalf of the school system to fund large capital projects like school construction. For Gaston College, I'm recommending a $100,000 increase in operating allocation and a flat capital allocation. I'll transition now to the capital budget. I'm recommending approximately $32 million in CIP projects, $27 million in funding for county CIP projects, and nearly $5 million in enterprise fund for solid waste projects. More detailed information about the CIP process and the projects being recommended can be found beginning on page 32 in your book. The recommended projects represent investments in four following areas. First, facilities, maintenance, repairs, and new construction, replacement of existing equipment and new equipment or vehicles. Third is land acquisition, design, and planning services. And the fourth category is economic development, land acquisition, and infrastructure improvements. This next slide focuses on the $27.2 million that is the county, that are the county projects recommended for funding. This table breaks out the $27 million in county projects recommended for funding with the 24 budget amount in yellow, so that very first column there. I'm just going to briefly highlight a few. First, under the category of economic development, bridge betterments. The county is partnering with local municipalities on two North Carolina DOT road widening and bridge expansion projects, one on I-85 and one on US-74. The county will be contributing to a local match that will leverage $9 million in state funding to enhance the aesthetics of the interstate and the highway bridges and interchange landscaping throughout the county. This is a unique opportunity that is once-in-a-lifetime in many ways. It enhances our image with businesses and visitors as they drive through the community on one of the highest-traveled roads in the state. Next, I'll talk about culture and recreation. Catawba Cove. The development Catawba Cove will include a New Hope Road Access and a Ratchford Farm Road Access. This was mentioned earlier in the presentation tonight in your meeting as well on the master plan. The property will be a county park with trails and support facilities, including restrooms and maintenance facilities. The Catawba Cove Park will connect to the upcoming South Fork Corridor Greenway, which will allow residents to bike or hike from Spencer Mountain to Catawba Cove. Next is the Dallas Park Master Plan build-out. Dallas Park is the county's oldest park built in the 1970s. Over the last 10 years, many areas of the park have been upgraded, but the baseball-s softball complex has not been updated. There are no accessible routes to the fields, and Field 4 has drainage issues. The concession stand and bathroom do not meet ADA guidelines, and the parking lots are not large enough. That is included in the capital plan. And the last area I highlight relates to public health and the renovation of the building at Hudson. The renovation and expansion will allow us to improve customer service, delivery of health services, and better coordinate care and linkage to additional services. So you can see in this table, the total cost will increase significantly in FY '25. The planning and design phases are included in the first year of the plan, in FY '24. The county anticipates and is planning for a debt issuance to fund these projects, which is why it's crucial to maintain our revenues as we prepare for these major projects and anticipate future debt issuances. So how does that $27 million for county projects fit into the community investment fund model that we've been talking about so much in the last two years? As shown here, all of the revenue flows through the CIF and is transferred out for capital projects and debt service obligations. So the total revenue projected for FY '24 is just over $67 million. In addition to the $27 million in CIP projects, I'm recommending $26 million to fully fund the county's debt service obligations on behalf of Gaston County Schools. This includes the issuance of the new debt that's currently in progress for Greer Middle. My recommendation also includes nearly $14 million in county debt service, vehicle installment financing payments, and smaller furniture and equipment purchases. So these are some priorities for future work. Every year that I've been your manager and I've shared my budget recommendation, I have a list of items that are work for the coming year. These are in line with your guiding principles, as I've referenced at the beginning of the presentation. The first category is sound fiscal policy and stewardship. In April of '22, Moody's upgraded the county and upgraded us from a AA2 to a AA1. Moody's will update our rating again with the issuance of the debt for Greer Middle. It's imperative that we maintain or improve this rating as we move forward with the next issuance of school bonds. We maintain a AA+ rating that we received in April of 2019 with Standard and Poor's. Deliver competitive services. We will continue to pursue productive and efficient service delivery efforts and maximize our resources through peer reviews, benchmarking, analyzation of data and trends, and restructuring how public services are offered. We are also prioritizing employee wellness and looking to implement an onsite clinic for employees for a more comprehensive health and wellness program. In addition, county-wide policies are being reviewed and updated or created, including employee travel, P-card, and vehicle policies. And last, I'll talk about investing in infrastructure. We will continue to review existing and planned infrastructure investments to ensure consistency and good stewardship of our natural and fiscal resources. Two major projects being recommended for design funding are the public safety campus and the public health building renovation. So now that you've received my recommendation and I've covered a lot tonight, there are three remaining steps in the budget process. The budget document will be available for public review on our website and in person at the main library in Gastonia and in the county administration facility downtown Gastonia beginning tomorrow. We also have an electronic version available at all of our libraries. We have scheduled a budget public hearing and budget adoption for May the 9th here in the Gaston County Courthouse at 7:00 PM during our next scheduled business meeting. And finally, the presentation of the Unified Fire Protection Service District Budget and tax rates will be presented for your consideration at the May 25 meeting. So finally, as you all know, budget preparation takes a lot of time, energy, and hard work. I would like to take a moment to say some thank you. I would like to take a moment to say some thank yous. First, I'd like to thank all of you as county commissioners for your input, your guidance throughout the process, and tell you how much I appreciate your support and look forward to continuing the dialogue throughout the coming year. I would also like to thank our wonderful budget staff. If they would stand and be recognized, get up. Thank you. They work late at night. They, their abilities to analyze complicated data are really amazing, and I can't thank you guys enough. So, thank you. A big thank you is also owed to the budget contacts that work within each of our departments. They are in constant communication with the budget staff, with finance, with HR, to ensure that each department is well-managed and the directives and policies for my office are carried out fairly and consistently and are communicated throughout their departments. I'd also like to sincerely thank our finance, human resources, and IT staff for providing their expertise. They support all of the other departments and make it possible for us to accomplish our work. They do it with great skill and patience. And finally, I would like to thank the employees and our great organization. Thank you all for what you do to make Gaston County the best place to work and for always providing excellent public service every day. That concludes my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from the board at this time, Commissioner Hovess?
Dr. Eagle, one quick, a couple of quick things. I'd like to see in next year's budget, a metric showing our fleet of vehicles that we maintain and giving some kind of aging aggregate by vehicle type so that we can see, are we getting way older? Are we getting newer? How well are we doing? And we can use that from year to year to year to year to understand our maintenance costs and how, measure our effectiveness. And I think that's helpful for us because we're moving into a different direction in that area, and I think it would be helpful for us to have that metric. The second is an observation on your presentation, page twenty-one.
Okay.
We talk about individual funds, and that chart showed, if they'll pull it back up.
I will.
Okay.
Minor number differently than yours. What's the title of the slide?
No, I've got it off yours. It's your slide twenty-one in today's presentation.
Oh, slide twenty-one, got it.
I was paying attention. I wrote, I took notes.
I'm tracking, okay.
That's okay. Fees, license, and permits?
Yes, sir.
That's a combination of two line items on your page eighteen of the budget book, correct?
I'll double-check that with my staff.
I know, I'm, 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 I'm down in the weeds, I apologize.
It's fine.
But I think that comes up to like thirty-three, nine, and that's thirty-four, whatever, it just went away again, thirty-four, five.
Probably something else built in there.
There may be another.
We'll follow up with you on that.
Okay, it's not, it's not a biggie, but I'm, I'm making an assumption that those two certainly are part of it.
Sure, probably.
And that gets us almost there.
Mm-hmm.
When you do a breakdown on a pie chart, I'd like for it to be a line item that coincides in the budget book, because in that way, we can understand year to year to year and the effect.
Yeah.
Secondly, I want to point out for the public's information, page eighteen, which is not available, but I encourage anyone who's looking at the county budget to look at page eighteen of the manager's budget presentation, at the revenue, the actual revenue from property tax, and the percent increase for this year, because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about revale, we're talking about revaluation, we're talking about the additional funds that the county is collecting from residents, from revale, and that increase is six percent. Six percent. Think about inflationary costs that the county has incurred. And when you think about those things, it's probably nine to ten percent. I think you said something to that, you alluded to that earlier in your presentation. But we're taking it on the chin. We're not trying to take advantage of this huge revale. Now, some of us, and I am one of those in that category, whose property was above the aggregate in terms of the average. Mine was a hundred and eight percent. So I'm certainly paying more in taxes. But there are those who are paying less in taxes, because theirs was below the fifty percent average, and this reduction to a sixty-one cent tax rate, they'll pay less in tax. We only have one tax rate. It'd be great if we could put people into ten different categories like the federal government and have different income tax brackets, but we don't. We have a single property tax. And I think the work that's been done by your staff in terms of this budget year is exemplary. It's a tremendous amount of effort. I fully understand that. I've been in conversation with some of your staff over the last several weeks, asking all kinds of crazy questions, and they have been able to completely answer any question that I had to where I have no question about it. The conversation was made earlier today that we're pocketing an additional twenty-seven million dollars into the county coffers with revale. That number is less than eleven million dollars, which results in a six percent increase, just for the public's record and to go on record for the public, because the public needs to know what the seven of us are doing when we adopt a tax rate. And that's truly the effectiveness of what we're trying to do. And I just thought, I wanted to make those two points as a, just so that people think we don't read this, and some of us do. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Ms. Manager.
I have one follow-up to your comments related to the fleet metric. We have some information we can share as a follow-up to this meeting.
You may have that, but I'd like for it to be part of the.
But to include that next year.
Correct.
I have that down.
Because then we have it year after year.
Happy year.
And do it with the time-weighted average like you, the prior years and actual years.
Yep, happy to.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the man? Seeing none. As chairman, I wanted to personally thank you and your staff for listening to the goals of our board, also to making the citizens of Gaston County a priority. We work toward these priorities as we go through every year. We want to make Gaston County the destination for people to work, play, and stay. And I think your goals in this budget have put those to task, and so we continue to work toward our goals. I want to say thank you to this board for their input and what they've done. Say thank you to the staff of the finance department for working hard on the budgets and what you've had to do this time to really put together something that was, it was fluid as we went through the whole process. So I want to say thank you to the staff and everyone in here that's part of that. Thank you for what you do for our community. You're the face of this county. You're the front line to what happens in everyday life that we have. I want to say to the chief, to the sheriff, thank you for providing safety for our citizens. Mark, for the things you guys do in getting there expedited to make sure the citizens, because that's a big part of what we do, and it's a big part of how we continue to be successful in our county. Some of the things that go unseen are some of the other departments that play a big role. So we thank you guys, and we're not looking down upon anybody, because you guys all play a role in what happens. And we want to try to make sure that what we bring back every year is not someone who says, hey, we're going to take what's left of our budget, and we have to spend it. We want to try to put it back together, the thing we can do so we can provide things for you as the employees. But I just want to say thank you again to the citizens of Gaston. We have worked hard to make sure that we continue to be an outstanding pillar of your money, and when we have to do that fiduciary responsibility, that we take that serious. So I want to say thank you again to the citizens for allowing us the opportunity to serve you, to be able to take care of your dollars and corporate numbers, and also to make sure that our Gaston County is a family affair, from the employees to the citizens to our board. Anybody can come and do things. We've done so many phenomenal things over the past years, especially since COVID. Things have changed in Gaston County since COVID actually hit to where we get to do things a lot different now. The world, or Gaston County, I should say, is a changing model every day because of that. Before, we couldn't go get food and have it delivered the way we do now. We couldn't go and pick it up. Just about every restaurant has established those type of things, and that's, that's an amenity that we take for granted, because someone has to pay for those people to be able to do those things, and so we're grateful for that. We're grateful for the things that happen. Thank you for, Dr. Eagle, for the ongoing success. Over the years, we've had, we've had tremendous success in looking at our budget, but I'm very happy to see this, and we will reconvene on the ninth of May, and that's going to be at seven o'clock. There's a change from the six o'clock to the seven o'clock time. But this concludes our meeting for tonight. The board has canceled the May work session and has scheduled a special meeting on May ninth at seven PM to hold a hearing for considering adoption of the proposed budget. The meeting will be held here in the Harlebee Gaston Junior Public Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions or comments, please telephone our clerk. Donna Buff is sitting in for her tonight, Ms. Angela. Thank you for your hard work, and you can telephone our clerk at seven oh four eight six six three one nine six. Good night, Gaston. No way!